I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Up first is report of the chairman. I just wanted to update the board members on the Board of Finance meeting last Thursday. We'll be discussing this later in the agenda under the superintendent's report, item G, which is discussion of budget surplus. I did send a letter, as everybody knows, after our last Board of Education meeting, requesting that the surplus that we had left over from COVID, the COVID expenses that we had saved, be placed in the 10-248A account. A couple of items occurred. One, they did not take action on that letter. They reserved it for the following month while they do their transfers. We did our budget transfers two weeks ago. They're doing theirs next month, so they've waited until, they're going to wait until next month. But some of the things that they are looking at are possibly setting up with that money a special education reserve, possibly setting up a COVID account with that money. And then they also asked Steve Kirsch if we would discuss and put a priority list together of items that we would want to possibly be restored with that money in this current year budget. So that's what we'll be discussing later on in item G, and then putting together a priority list and submitting it to the Board of Finance for consideration next month at their meeting. Did I miss anything? So we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Shannon. Second by Jerry. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Hold on, I apologize. David Ferris is posting. Is the door open?
No.
Hold on, let me just make sure if that's what he's texting. Bob? Oh, he's not coming tonight. I'm sorry. Christine is here, and George is here, and they got, oh, they got in now, they said. Okay. Thank you. Is all the mics on now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. George and Christine just got in, they said, so they're on their way in. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Will we have MASC reps soon?
I think, yeah, Steve and I talked the other day, and I think it'd be great if we can get the MASC reps here, and even if they could sit in the audience, come up, give their report, and leave.
Okay. Great. Should we have them mute? Does anybody have any?
All participants are muted.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul, because I'm getting, I'm like hearing sounds coming up. Thank you. Anybody else have any reports this evening? Board of Finance met, but we'll be covering all of the things that we discussed in Board of, uh, sorry, Board of Finance, Finance Committee. We'll be discussing all the things we covered in Finance Committee later in the meeting, so I won't go over it yet now. Anything else? George, did you have anything for committees? We just were going to that.
No.
Okay, great. All right. We will move on to public participation. Now you can unmute. If anybody wishes to participate, please state your name.
Q and A session has started.
All right, so if anybody would like to participate, if you state your name, and then I'll take names down, and then go back to everybody in that order. Is everybody unmuted? All right. Yes, Paul?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, is this the public participation?
Yes, it is. I just need your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Mike Ganino, G-A-N-I-N-O, and I live at 85 Milbrook Terrace.
Okay.
So I had a couple comments and maybe a question, too, and I understand that the questions won't really be answered at this Board of Ed meeting, but I wanted to comment on the situation with the investigation with Dr. Zamera, particularly how it was concluded. And I understand that the Board of Ed thought that the investigation was appropriate, and if it was important enough to begin, then I really think that it's important enough to conclude properly. And in my opinion, concluding properly really does not mean leaving the report unfinished or in a draft format. So I would hope that the Board would consider finalizing the report, not leaving it in a draft, and really taking into account the money that was paid for the report, and also, you know, Dr. Zamera's reputation, which I think the way things have been left have left a little questionable. And I know that that's not the intent, because he's a good man. But I've heard in the press that the conditions that were questionable during the investigation may have existed prior to Dr. Zamera. So the question that I have is, if that was the case, what's being done to either correct that, or if it hasn't been corrected, what's being considered? And one of the things that I always think is important is that every child and every family in Monroe is entitled to a really fantastic education, and our three kids have gotten that. And I'm hoping that there's some type of controls in place that would have every every child who is getting an education in Monroe to actually live in Monroe, whether it's by rental or their parents own the house. And if they're not, I'm hoping that there's controls in place to have those families pay what the designated tuition is. So that would be one idea. And then the second is, I understand that special education costs are out of control, and every child who goes that route gets the best education that we can afford, or by the state mandate. But has it ever been considered that instead of having a cost center, to turn it into a revenue center, and then maybe one day a profit center? And no one likes to think of the Board of Ed or the town as a business, but we are, in fact, a business. And if there's a way, over time, short term, long term, I don't know, to bring those professionals in-house, have our kids be educated here, and then, one day, other communities may be able to utilize those services that we're providing, I think that there'd be some efficiencies that would be present, and it would not decrease the effectiveness of the education that the kids are entitled to and that the kids are getting. But I think, I'm hoping that that's something that can be considered. I don't know if it has in the past, but that's my thoughts.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation?
Hello?
Yes? If you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marie Blake. My address is 359 Wheeler Road. I'm here tonight as the president and a town resident. I'd like to address two issues tonight: the surplus money and the teaching conditions or teaching during COVID. In early July, the teachers' unions agreed to take up to three furlough days. Up to three furlough days. How many other districts in the state have taken furlough days? None. How many other districts have raised teacher salaries? None. Why did we do it? We did it to preserve jobs, to preserve class sizes, and most importantly, to preserve this award-winning school district. The give-back of up to three furlough days was established in early July, July 11. The surplus of $323,000 was reported at the end of August. The timing for you, bad timing for the members of all bargaining units. The economic downturn that was expected in Monroe has not come to fruition. Last week at the Board of Finance meeting, the Times said tax collections were trending nicely, and people were paying on time, which suggests that the unemployment rate in Monroe is not as high as was anticipated. When this bleak picture was painted, we kept hearing, "Teachers need to step up, do what's right." Well, we did. And now it's your turn to step up and do what's right. The town will be settling with Dr. Zamera at a great expense to the district. The money was found from savings elsewhere in the budget. There has been talk of putting $323,000 surplus back into special education or to allocate money to items that had been cut. Where there once was no money, now there is. Our furlough agreement stated that if surplus funds existed, it would go back to the bargaining unit. I am here on behalf of the Monroe teachers to implore the Board to repay that money to the bargaining unit. It is the right thing to do. Our contract was negotiated in good faith, and just as side note, a Board of Finance member did serve on that committee when salaries were negotiated. Teachers are the heart of a community, and more than ever during this pandemic, teachers need to know their value. High grades sounds easy, but it hasn't been. Teachers are working countless hours to accommodate all students regardless of their location, in school or at home. When I ask a teacher how they're doing, the answers are, "Surviving, doing the best I can." But the only answer I always get from elementary teachers is drowning. Drowning. And I fear that going all in will exacerbate this feeling rather than lessen it, as parents will still have the option for all remote learning. As I think about this idea of going in full-time with all students, I shake my head from a logistical and safety point of view. Of concern to teachers is obviously being around so many people in such close quarters for so many hours. Social distancing, how will it happen? What would life in classrooms look like? I imagine 17 or more unmasked students eating lunch in an elementary classroom being supervised by an adult. We believe we will not be able to social distance in our classrooms, but yet we must social distance at stores, beauty salons, coffee shops, restaurants, municipal buildings, and at Board of Education meetings. Why is it that I can't be sitting with you tonight in the library? I understand the meeting is capped at 25, but on a daily basis, MASC is trying to maintain half-capacity in the library at any given time. That capacity number is not 25, but 70. Why are there double standards? You, the Board of Education, will be making decisions that affect all of us as a town and school community. In my opinion, the health and safety of all the school-aged children in Monroe and all the employees of the Monroe Board of Education should be of your utmost concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right.
Q and A session is over.
All right, we will move on to the report of the acting superintendent. Joe, are you using the?
I will in a bit, just for Sheila, for the teacher bar. Can I shut this off, Paul, or do you keep it on?
Shut it off?
What's that?
Oh, there was?
All right, hold on. I'll, you want me to call it back up? Will it pick back up? Joe Kaczynski, sorry about that, folks.
All participants are muted.
Thanks, Paul. A few things. The first two, the first two kind of go hand in hand, and that's the health indicators update and the instructional plan transition. And I know this is a, I know it's a, you know, a very touchy subject, but I do want to just, you know, hit on those for sure. As you remember, at the last meeting, I gave everyone an update on the, on the health indicators that we were using. We receive those, we receive those updates every Thursday from the Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education. They include the numbers from, any health-related numbers from the previous Sunday through the most recent Saturday. There's, if you remember, there was four indicators. The leading indicator is the new COVID cases per 100,000 over a seven-day rolling average. The secondary indicators include the percent test positivity as a seven-day average, the new COVID hospitalizations per 100,000 people per day as a seven-day average, and the percent of COVID-like illness hospital emergency department visits as a seven-day average. Each of those indicators is, is put into a different category depending on the risk level as either low risk, moderate risk, or high risk. And that has, from the get-go, what the state of Connecticut has been advocating to be used as the recommendation for the instructional plan. So if something falls in the low-risk category, that suggests that we should be in full in-person. If something is in the moderate risk, that means that, you know, we should probably be in the hybrid, which is what we're in right now. And if something is in the high risk, then that suggests that we should be full remote instruction. You know, we have always, you know, said that our aspiration was to work toward getting our kids back in full-time. And, you know, when this all started, I talked about, you know, dipping our foot in the water before jumping in and finding out it was over our head. So we took a cautious approach at the beginning of the year, and, you know, the numbers indicated that we could be in for full in-person learning. But we wanted to see how it was going to go. We wanted to see if there was going to be any spikes before making any major decisions or any changes. And this also gave us a chance to get everybody acclimated to the new environment, teachers, students, get everybody ready for the new, the new normal, so to speak. So, you know, we've continued to look at those indicators now. I think I've gotten, I have on tonight's board pack, the last four weeks of those indicators. And we have remained, and what I've said to parents throughout, and staff members who have asked me about, you know, what point to be transitioned, I said, hey, listen, we're trying to get in, and then we want to see how things go. Does it stay, does it stay flat? Does it trend down a little bit, or is it going to spike way up? And, you know, we have maintained being in the low-risk category for all of our indicators, the lead indicator and all three secondary indicators. You know, if you look at, if you look at the four reports that are there tonight, you know, the lead indicator, which is the new COVID cases per 100,000, per 100,000 people over the seven-day average, when it started four weeks ago, it was at 4.5. It went down to 4.3. It went down to 3.4, and this week it was at 4.3. All suggesting that, you know, for the leading indicator, that, you know, it suggests that we should be in full in-person learning. Below 10 for the leading indicator suggests that you should be in full in-person learning. 10 to 25 suggests you should be in a hybrid, and higher than 25 suggests you should be in the full remote. If you look at all of the secondary indicators, again, they all suggest that they are, that we're in the low-risk categories. So again, you know, all this favors in-person learning, but we wanted to be cautious. And we want to, we want to remain cautious moving forward, but it's my recommendation that starting the week of October 5th, that we start to bring our elementary students back in every day. What we would want to do, and I've talked this over with the principals, is we would look to have full days of school on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, with half-days on Wednesdays. In the half-days, we'll give our teachers an opportunity to check in with kids at home, and more importantly, and I agree exactly what Marie said. I know our teachers, all of our teachers, but especially our elementary teachers, you know, they're really struggling with, you know, doing the two modes of learning. It's hard. It's hard for parents. It's hard for kids. It's hard, it's hard everywhere. What I'd like to be able to do with those Wednesday half-days is also give some much-needed, you know, collaboration time for grade-level teachers to come together, for reading consultants to come together, the coaches, the instructional coaches, to continue to plan for both in-person and remote students, and also give our teachers a chance to actually touch base with those remote students that are home, that are, that have decided to, you know, maintain the remote learning throughout the, throughout this whole time. You know, in order to do this, we have to, you know, we have to adhere to the mitigation strategies that our kids have gotten used to, and they've done a pretty nice job. I, you know, we will continue to try to, and I'm going to use this word, maximize. It's the word that the state of Connecticut has used, and that is, you know, we're looking to maximize social distancing wherever feasible. You know, we're going to do our best to try to keep our kids as far apart as possible, but listen, I'm not going to be disingenuous and say that, you know, the kids are going to maintain six feet at all times. That's, that's just, you know, that may be possible in some classes, in some of the smaller classes, but it's not going to be the case in a lot of them. But that's one strategy, and there's other things that we can do to help protect ourselves and to continue to work towards getting our kids in full-time. You know, in order to do this, we're giving ourselves a couple of weeks of lead time so we can begin to prepare with even more PPE, especially the plastic barriers that you see out here right now. Each elementary principal, we've gotten a lot of that stuff. We've made that stuff in-house, much bigger than a lot of the ones I've seen in other buildings. Each of our elementary principals has actually put an order into our maintenance department who's been making these kind of custom barriers for all of our classes. So we're going to, I think we have an order of probably, it's got to be over 100 more of them, and our maintenance staff is making those right now. You know, the other thing is getting the kids outside as much as possible. You know, the gym classes, obviously, when the weather permits, we've been lucky with some nice weather early this year, but also for lunch and whatnot. Kids have been bringing in blankets and, not blankets, but towels, and eating their lunch outside. So getting them outside as much as possible. You know, like I said, we're trying to give the principals some lead time here. You know, there's a lot of logistics that have to be figured. I know I'm putting a lot of pressure on Kelly, Bruce, and Lee, and I'll support them in any way I can, but I know, you know, this is going to have, you know, this is going to create some pressure, especially at, you know, with the logistics of lunch, with the logistics of arrival, but probably most importantly, with the logistics of dismissal. Dismissal is going to be, it's going to be difficult. We continue to talk about the mitigation strategies. We got to continue the good work that we've been doing so far with kids wearing masks. They've been, I think they've exceeded our expectations around the district in terms of adhering to wearing masks, which was one of our biggest concerns when this all started. We didn't think they'd be able to keep the masks on, and by and large, you know, they have. We have to continue with the other mitigation strategies: hand washing, hand sanitizing. We've gotten outdoor sinks at the elementary schools, in the playgrounds, and we're looking at possibly renting a few more of those if we're going to be bringing more kids, bringing more kids back in. We've implemented enhanced cleaning protocols. In fact, we dedicated a portion of the CARES Act money to hire what I like to call sanitizers in each school. These are a lot of our, probably our youngest alumni who, you know, are looking for work right now, and they've basically been tasked with going around the schools and just sanitizing all day. They usually have, you know, a little canister of disinfectant, you know, some cloth towels, and they go around, they hit the high touch points. If, you know, teachers need them to come into the room to wipe stuff down, they come in, and they're just kind of what I like to call Johnny on the spot. They just, they're there, and they'll do whatever, you know, whatever needs to get hit. We have one of those in each school right now. You know, the other piece that makes the most sense with, again, you know, starting this slow, is, you know, the elementary, the elementary level gives us the best opportunity to take advantage of the cohorts. You know, I've said from the get-go, it's going to be way more difficult. It'll be easier to cohort the elementaries. It's going to be much more difficult with the middle school, and even more so at the high school, but this gives us a chance to get in. It also, you know, right now, you know, when the kids aren't, this gives us a little bit more control, because when the kids aren't in school three times a week, you know, the question is, where are they? You know, some, you know, some may be at home, some may be at a babysitter, some may be in a daycare. So they're not cohorting with us. This gives us a little bit more ability to cohort our kids with each other and with us. You know, as I've seen in some communities in the, in the area, throughout the state, probably, you know, the most important thing that can happen moving forward is that our parents have been great, that they continue to be good partners with us, and if kids are sick, they need to keep them home. You know, I've seen this happen in other districts where, you know, they've had some, they've had some spread there. But if we want to keep the kids in school, then we need to keep them home when they're sick and get tested when that's warranted. It's always better to err on the side of safety, you know. Hopefully, parents, I'd encourage them to call their pediatricians, you know, before they ever return a kid to school. The last thing I just, I just wanted to talk about was, you know, we're not alone here, okay? We're not, we're not flying alone. You know, there's a lot of districts around the state that have been in full, in person since the year began. Many in our area took our approach and tested the waters first, but they're also moving in, you know, in this direction, some of them faster than others. New Fairfield has been in K through 8 since day one. And I talked to, you know, I talked to, they went K through 8 since the first day of school, and they went, they started 9 through 12 today. You know, they didn't have, they have not had any, you know, knock up with, they haven't had any cases. Region 15, Pomprog, same thing, K through 8 has been in since the beginning of the year, and the high school has had a kind of a similar hybrid as us. Region 16, which is Beacon Falls, Oxford, has had K-5 in four days a week since the beginning of the year. Darien is looking to bring K through 12 in starting next week. New Canaan, K through 4 next week. Wilton is looking for October 5th to start to bring the elementaries in. Ridgefield, K through 2 next week, 3 through 5 the week after. Bethel is bringing in K through 8 on the week of September 29th. And Newtown is K through 6, starting next, I'm sorry, starting October 5th. And they're targeting November 2nd for the high school, which is the end of the first quarter, which I don't know if Mike and Steve have talked to any of their colleagues, but a lot of, that seems to be the trend in the area, is that middle schools are looking to mid to late October, and the high schools at the end of, end of quarter 1. So we're not alone in flying this, in trying for this, I'm sorry. Our teachers have done, I can't agree anymore with Marie. Our teachers have done an amazing job, you know, but we know that in-person learning is significantly better than, you know, the remote learning that our kids have had to do. Our staff, our students, our families have all worked incredibly hard to make this the best situation it can be. But, you know, I strongly feel like we've, you know, we've been in this. I've said from the start, our goal was to get, you know, to try to keep getting back in. The numbers are good right now. And if we're not going to do it now, then we're never, we're never going to be able to do it, because I know what's going to happen once, you know, October, November hits and the flu hits. You know, we're going to have to be prepared to maneuver out of this, you know, very quickly. But, you know, once the year starts to progress and the winter months come in, you know, we might, you know, we could very easily find ourselves on full remote. Our numbers have been good. They've remained good. We've seen this working in other communities that have just as many and just as few resources as we have. So, you know, I think it's worth it for us to, you know, for this is the time to give it a shot. So I'll open it up to you guys if you have any questions. Alan?
So the concerns I heard from parents were with regards to some of our class sizes being pretty packed. How are the kids going to socially, do social distancing, given the large class sizes? And in addition, what about the buses? The buses are going to have more kids on them.
Yeah, and again, I'm going to, I would never say that we're going to be socially distanced. We're not going to be six feet apart. We're probably going to be closer to three feet apart, and in some places maybe slightly, slightly less. That's why we want to continue to get more of the barriers up between, between people. we want to continue to get more of the barriers up between people. And, you know, I was talking to, I think it was Lee today, about the buses and making sure the bus company knows to, the kids need to be getting on the bus, going to the back, working from the back to the front. The bus windows should be open to increase ventilation. You know, all the state guidance has suggested that that's okay right now. Jerry?
Help me understand this, Joe. Right now, we're Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and we deep-clean on Wednesdays. So I'm sitting here as a retired teacher saying, then why aren't we doing what Region 16 is doing? I think you said they're the ones going four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We're really not deep-cleaning our three elementary schools, because, let's be honest, tell everybody what a half a day is at an elementary school. 1:30? 2 o'clock? I mean, a half-day is not 11 o'clock. It's not a half-day of work.
Yeah, no, you're right. Yeah.
So I'm a little bit concerned about how we're going to deep-clean three elementary schools in a few hours.
And I think one of the, and even the, you know, I was on the Department of Public Health call last week, and it's something, we've tried to get away from using this term "deep-clean," because I think, I think it gives people a false sense of security. I think it makes people think that, you know, we have people coming in with hazmat suits on Wednesdays. And it was something that we did talk about in the summertime, that, hey, we're going to deep-clean on Wednesdays. And, you know, quite honestly, we've talked about enhancing our cleaning protocols, and that's why we've hired these other, you know, what I'm calling the sanitizers. So as soon as the building empties out every day, we usually, we bring these folks in. In most cases, there's a few cases where we've played with the shifts of some of our current workers just to, because the timing didn't work out with availability. But for the most part, we're bringing these folks in a little bit before lunchtime, and then they're there, you know, cleaning off tables and desks and chairs and going around wiping down doorknobs and, you know, handrails and things like that. So, you know, I think we need to move away from deep-cleaning.
Gotcha.
I think it gives, you know, a little bit of a false sense of security and stick to, you know, what we've been calling our enhanced cleaning protocols. We've also, Jack's done a great job working with the custodial crew in terms of also, if, you know, we used to have a protocol, if somebody missed, if somebody was out of work, you know, we didn't cover that run that night, and if they missed again, and Jack corrected them wrong, then someone would pick up four hours the next night and whatever. We basically, we basically put an end to that for the time being, because we know that cleaning is critical. So if somebody's out, you know, we're basically mandating overtime for somebody else to pick up the, to pick up the shifts.
I've got two more, but I'll wait.
So now this, so the people who are on temporary remote, nothing changes. How about people who say, I'd rather just stay hybrid? Can they stay hybrid or they have to come in?
I would, I mean, I would think they could stay hybrid. I don't think it would, it would change things dramatically. You know, I also, you know, I want to talk to the, I want to talk to the elementary principals and talk about some things that we might be able to do to try to ease the burden on some of these teachers. And, you know, I think it was Lee and I that may have been talking today too about, you know, maybe one, instead of, so right now, what's happening is, and this is where, you know, it's really difficult, especially, you know, I can't imagine how K-1, 2, how hard it must be for those kids that are at home, and those, the parents that are at home, because they need to be on with those kids. But right now, we have, you know, if there's, you know, four teachers in the fourth grade, they're each doing, you know, a phonics lesson, an ELA lesson, a math lesson, and then, you know, science or social studies late in the day, and those are, those are broadcasted on. You know, maybe there's a way where we could spread some of that work out where, you know, teacher X is the math, the math teacher. So all those students that are home get onto that person's math lesson. Teacher Y is the ELA teacher, you know, all the kids that are home get on with that, to try to take some of the, to try to ease some of the burden away from the teachers. And that's why I also want to give them the early release on the Thursdays to be able to plan some of that work.
All right, then I'm going to jump on again. How's the subpool, Joe?
Subpool is...
For elementary, I would expect, and I'm going to say this as a board of ed member, that if one of our elementary teachers does not feel good, they have the right to pick up that phone and call in. How's the subpool?
Subpool is weak. I'll be honest with you, but Jack is actually running a subfare on...
I saw it.
Oh, you saw that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're running a subfare next week to try to get, to get some more people. We have people now, but, I mean, you saw, that's, I think that was an issue in one of our neighboring towns.
It was, and I know him well. It was a tough call.
Yeah.
And it leads me to another point. Tell the board how you and Jack are going to look at, how many children in an elementary school, God forbid, have to show signs of COVID for you to react? The board knows the policy. You said it. I just want to hear it from you again. So Steptiel has three students who went out and got the actual test and they have it. What's the procedure again?
The procedure?
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically. Thank you.
No, it's a, it's a good question. And quite honestly, you know, it's something that we're going to, my first call is going to be to our local health director. If she hasn't called me first, because a lot of times she might get this information and call us first. And this is what happened in our first case a couple weeks ago. You know, it was a conversation with our local health director. It's a conversation with the State Department of Public Health, and then it's a decision from there on how widespread is it? Is it three kids in one classroom? Is it three kids that are now spreading out over different classes that were somehow on a, you know, contacted with someone else, and it might take more to do contact tracing? That's closed down some of the schools, because, you know, I think that was a situation in Weston today, where they, they needed the day to do the contact tracing, because it was, it was kind of a widespread event. So...
Thank you.
But it's not a, you know, it's not, I think, you know, that's been the question. How many kids is it going to take to close a school? And it could be one, it could be, you know, it could be a bunch. Yeah.
Anybody else have questions? Now, ultimately, this is Joe's decision, as we know, because the governor and the commissioner of education has placed that all in Joe's hands over the summer. I'm sure he is just looking for our support as the board, because ultimately he makes the decision. Makes sense.
And that's a great, that is a great point. Joe, I hope you know you have that support. We just need to know how to answer questions.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, the young kids really, like, K through 2 especially, really need to be in school.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think most would say that it's probably the most difficult for those, those children in that, in that grade level, you know, trying to learn and not being there every single day.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I appreciate it. I know, it's, it's going to be tough. I think, you know, I think, you know, just, I had the chance to talk to Pat Cosatino in New Fairfield today, and, you know, it has been, you know, it has been, it's gone really well over there. And listening to some of the mitigation strategies that they have and some of the things that we're doing, I feel good. But I also know, it, you know, New Fairfield's in full. There's plenty of districts that are in full that haven't had a single case, and there's plenty of districts that have been, you know, hybrid this or whatever, and have had a bunch of cases. It's just, it is, you know, I hate to say it, but it is what it is. And if it's going to happen, you know, we have to prepare for it. I mean, it'd be crazy to think that we're not going to have another, you know, we're not going to have another situation. I mean, that'd be great, but I don't think that's even reasonable. And we're going to have to be, like I said, we're going to have to be really flexible in how we move forward and know that we might be moving from full-in to full-out in a moment's notice. So. One of the other things is, next week is a four-day week, and I wanted to combine the two in an announcement tomorrow to parents, just so they'll know. We will probably do, we will do what we did the first two weeks of school, and that's have Cohort A in on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Cohort B in on Thursday, Friday. All right. You still up?
All right. I'm going to ask Sheila to come up and just walk us through the teacher evaluation plan. So I don't know if you're familiar, but the state of Connecticut provided all districts with a little, a little flexibility, or a lot of flexibility really, in terms of the way teacher, teacher evaluation and administrator evaluation is done. So Sheila's going to walk us through a little bit, and then you'll notice later on on the agenda there's a, there's a bone anticipated, because it does, it's suggested that the board, you know, adopt the flexibility, which I'm assuming most districts will be implementing. Do you need to?
Yes, if you'd like. So we had a, our professional development and teacher evaluation committee meeting on Wednesday, because part of this in approving to go forward with the flexibilities is we also needed to have our PDT eval committee approve this, and then the board of ed, and then the superintendent. So this is the, our plan that we have had since the teacher evaluation plan came in place. We had one year that they had us make some adjustments to it, but this is our plan that we've been using now for years. It's broken up into a 50/50. Forty-five percent of it is on teacher goals, and then the whole school goal, and then the other 40 is on teacher observations and then parent feedback. So it's a 50/50 split. And we have the option this year of sticking with this or going to the flexibilities. The flexibilities has most of it the same, except there's that 45, instead of having student learning objectives, now there's student learning indicators. And the focus before was on test scores, taking a look at an SBAQ score and wanting to see growth in your students from one year to the next. We don't have test scores from last year because of everything that went on. Plus, the focus this year that we've heard throughout many of Joe's conversations, we've heard it from the commissioner, the governor, the social emotional of students has been a real concern for us in coming back to school. So instead of doing a student learning objective focused on test scores, it's now a student learning indicator, and it's focusing on that social emotional piece as well as student engagement, because we also have the hybrid model and you have the distance learning model. So we want to make sure that students are engaged, and also engaging families and having that family support. So teachers will be asked to create a goal and then have some indicators that they're going to use to measure that goal, with that focus being on social emotional, student engagement, or family engagement. Administrators will also have the student learning indicator, and they'll be looking at two indicators that are measuring that whole reopening, kind of like, what do we have to do to get school to open again? And how do we support the well-being of students and staff? How are we going to support distance learning and the health and safety of students and staff and the community? So it looks a little bit different than what we've had in the past and really more appropriate with what we're kind of dealing with right now. Observations in the past, if you're a brand-new teacher, you had a formal observa, you had three observations, two were formal with a pre-observation and a post-observation, and one was an informal, where the administrator would come in, but then there would be a follow-up with feedback and more of a conversation. This year, they're not making the formals because of the concern of who's in, who's out, what does it look like if you're in a hybrid model. So it's all informal observations. And again, it's based on the number of years that you're here. So most of our staff will have a minimum of two informal observations. Our new staff will have three. And our new staff may have a formal observation just for an administrator to kind of walk through that whole process with them. That's kind of an option there. But the, the observations will look a little different, because we're also looking for that social emotional piece and trying to see that come through in the lessons as well. And then there'll be what we call a review of practice. So there are a lot of things that an administrator can't see by walking into that classroom for 20 minutes. So the review of practice is an opportunity for the teacher to share the other things that they've done that the administrator wasn't able to see. And then administrators will have two, two visits from the superintendent and assistant superintendent and go over different things that have been going on and kind of bringing us back into school. At the end of the year, there's a whole rating process that happens that we've shared with you in the past. It's a four-level rating system. That's been waived for this year, so there'll be no end-of-the-year rating. At the end of the year, there was always, the teacher was asked to reflect and review kind of where they were with their goals. This year, it's a narrative. So the teacher will still be doing that self-assessment, but it's going to look a little different. And the administrator, instead of kind of really doing that whole rating piece, will now write a narrative that will highlight things, like commendations that the teacher had done, things that went really well, and then maybe some areas of improvement or recommendations for things for them to work on for the next school year. So it'll look a little bit different. As administrative team, when we had our admin retreat, we worked on some district and school goals to kind of get that social emotional piece around. So our overarching goal for the district and for each school is to create a safe and positive school or classroom environment for students and staff to develop social emotional competencies. So a teacher, for example, could take that as their overarching goal, and then they're going to write specific IAGDs, which would say how they're going to measure that. What's that going to look like in their classroom? How are they going to measure engagement? How are they going to measure the social emotional well-being of their students? Then we're going to have a survey. You know, we've always done parent surveys as part of our school climate. We'll have those again this year, and we'll be looking for specific information about social emotional learning for students as well as family engagement. So it's going to definitely look a little bit different, but I think it really reflects the fact that our school looks a little bit different this year too. And I think it's definitely more in line with kind of where we are. Any questions about it?
Does this align with, I know we had a pre-visit from MAS last year, and do some of these, I know we had some, they weren't dings, but they were like areas to look at over the next two years when they come through their formal visit, which I think is next year, next fall.
Is it next fall already?
2021.
Yeah.
It'll probably get postponed, because the schools that are being visited this year are getting postponed. So it is scheduled for October of next year, but my guess is it will get postponed. But this will fall, one of the areas of growth or priority areas, the way they called it, was the social emotional need. So this falls, everything that's been done is falls right in line with what they recommended.
I'm assuming that they're going to have to adapt, like everybody else, they're going to have to adapt their visits to the last couple of years, where the numbers just aren't there, because they don't exist, like, as they did in the past nine or six years. Great. Thank you.
Are you guys using a particular social emotional curriculum or program?
We're not. And actually, there was a state survey that Anne, Joe and I worked on last week, that actually kind of referenced some different things. Anne has been, and the guidance counselors have been looking at a bunch of different resources. And we did have several staff go through the ruler training and have some of those resources. We've also had people do PVIS and looking at those. So we don't have anything formal. I'm thinking as the state goes through this, one of the things that the State Department of Ed said as they're going through allowing us to use this flexibility is that they're supposed to be providing us with support. The timeline for those supports are coming, you know, beginning of September, middle of September, end of September, beginning of October. So how much direction we're going to actually get from them will be very interesting to see, Alan.
You know, you might have seen, Alan, that the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, Mark Braggett, who does the ruler training, they've offered 10 hours of, I don't know...
Certificate program?
Certificate program for all, all staff in the state free of charge. So...
And we did put that out to all staff, for anybody who is interested in participating. I know several administrators have already signed up for it as well too, so...
So social emotional learning is going to be defined according to the Yale ruler?
Honestly, I'm not sure how it's going to be defined. We're, like I said, the state is supposed to be giving us resources, and their timeline is not really, it's not last week, which is what we wish it were, because here we are trying to put all this in place and get our school year started. And they're still, you know, trying to figure out what it's going to look like. So they've said to us, we'll have some more information to even help teachers write goals. Like, what does a social emotional goal look like? And how am I going to measure that in my classroom? They're supposed to be giving us some samples of what those will be as well.
My understanding from what you're saying was like, that's offered as a resource, the, the, Mark from Yale's...
Yes, that's just an example.
It's offered as a resource, but it's not like what we're aligning to. We don't...
It's just one of many resources that we're using.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you, Shan.
Probably the closest one that, you know, I don't know necessarily adopted, but would be ruler, which is the one out of Yale.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Ruler stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating your emotions. We did send a, we We did send a, we did send a small contingent to Yale a couple of years ago, but with everything that happened this year, we weren't able to really follow up with that. I don't know if you guys are using, using that in Norwalk?
Yeah, we did though. We have the same training.
Yeah.
We were supposed to get to the next step and then COVID hit. So all of those things have kind of been postponed too.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Good job, Sheila.
Thank you.
Just want to give a quick update on, thanks, on, on school lunch. Ron Jack and I met with Alan Dean and Horacio Quodo from Sedexo last week. It's early, so I get this. And don't forget, the first four days of the year were half-days. At the high school, it was grab and go on your, on your way out. So a lot of kids didn't eat lunch, but, and we're going to meet again at the end of the month. But our high school participation is down 89% right now. Our national school lunch program, so that's the other four schools, is down 95% right now. A lot of kids are bringing their own lunch. So it's way down. So we're going to meet with Sedexo again at the, you know, again, that was after only two weeks. And remember, the first week was all half-days. Joe, questions here?
Explain the free hot lunch pro-, program that everybody else in the state's getting Southbury and.
Oh, you read my notes ahead of.
Yeah, I did not. I did call. I was like, come on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that's what I want to talk about. Yeah. So, so like I said, I want to have, I want to have Sedexo. We're going to meet with Sedexo again in October and then I've actually asked Alan Dean to come in here and talk to us because I want to know what's our liability? What's the board's liability for, for lunch moving forward? We have made some changes, Jared, to your, to your, to your point, at least in the short term. So what Jerry is referring to is the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the National School Lunch Program have, have combined to provide districts the opportunity to waive the cost of school lunches for any of the schools that participate in the National School Lunch Program. So everyone but Massey, Fawn Hollow, Jackie Hollow, Stepney and Monroe Elementary. So that actually started today. Jack crafted an email that went out to all families at the end of last week, notifying them that there is free lunch for all students. It'll be reimbursed at $3.50 per lunch back to the, back to the district. So every one of our kids K through eight is entitled to a, to a free lunch that will be reimbursed back to the district. This lasts only until December 31st. Or until the funds run out is, is what I've been told. I don't know that the funds are going to run out. The, and what I've been told is if they were to run out, we would know well in advance that they were and we would obviously switch the program before then. So that's one thing that they're doing. The other thing is, you know, when we started in the beginning of the year, we, you know, everything has been kind of a grab and go-ish type thing, cold food, you know, sandwiches, which probably aren't the most popular thing, especially at the elementary, at the elementary level. So, you know, they want to get some of the more popular warm items back on them, back on the menu, the pizzas, the, you know, the chicken patties and things like that. So they're going to start offering a hot lunch selection as well. So, you know, they're hoping to increase the numbers of students purchasing lunch, you know, within the next few days. And like I said, I'm, we will meet with Alan probably in the beginning of October and we'll probably have him at our second meeting here so we can understand what, what our liability is.
Have you applied, Jeff, for this grant? And has it been approved?
It was approved. Yeah, yeah. It was approved. Yeah, we talked. And now, I meant to write down, because we were talking about that the other day, what her position was, but it's Fenella Brown. I know her name. But I know she's at the, at the State Department of Education, but it was approved.
All right, because I just don't want to find out in two months. We owe a substantial amount of money for this.
Well, and the one flaw I've heard with this is the child has to take the entire hot lunch offered or the parent's account gets charged. So I need you and Jack to look in to that. You know, in Southbury, I have many friends that have been, they have accounts like we have accounts here. And if the child doesn't take the whole hot lunch offered, the parent's account gets hit. So just check into that and let me know when you have a chance because I have no idea what they're referring to.
You know, that sounds something like what was happening here a few years ago where the kids, I know it was at the high school, I know it was at all the schools, but they had to, they had to take the vegetable and this and then.
Full disclosure, my two granddaughters are in Southbury in elementary school. And yeah, if they don't take the whole hot lunch, they get hit.
But that, but that was part of the national hot lunch program, which our elementary schools and our middle school are.
Yeah.
But our high school isn't.
Yeah.
Right.
But I remember back then, when the high school was on, the kids were just literally walking out and taking the apple and throwing it in the garbage. They're taking the carrots.
No, it's just if the parents can be charged, I just want them.
The food can be taken. I think they get everything on the tray and I think most of the kids dump the stuff that they don't want.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, didn't they eventually get like a basket or something to?
We tried to figure out a way to get, get some of that stuff to the food pantry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next is review of August fund activity statement, Ron.
Got to have common sense sometimes.
So, you know, it's early in the year, so there's not, you know, a lot going on at this point. One, one account I did want to point out through August that was well over budget was the supplies line and that was directly related to the COVID supplies that are being, that are hitting that object code, that's 756100.
But will some of that be able to be?
Yeah, it's, it's separated in its own account. So we've got it segregated, but it's just, you know, it's showing, you know, available budget is, you know, negative $93,000 through August 31st. And it's, you know, up, up to date as of today, the specific line within that object code is, is at a negative 209 at this point.
But some of that would be able to be offset from the funds we talked about last meeting?
Yes, the coronavirus relief.
And also if the town sets up a coronavirus fund too.
Right.
Well.
Yes.
Thanks, Ron.
So that, yeah, I don't know if anyone has any other questions.
And is there anything you're trending that you're concerned about at this point?
At this point, no, not really.
I mean, I know it's still early.
Yeah. Sped is still, I think we're still, you know, floating some encumbrances, but.
I have a question on transportation. Are we, how are, how are our bus runs? Are we still operating even in this situation at what we budgeted for? Or is there any savings in that due to the hybrid nature of where we're at?
There was a little bit of savings initially right now because we went from the 182 to 177, which is actually to the tune of, I think, a little over $50,000.
It was about $55,000, yeah.
Yeah, we've only had one Wednesday and now we have our second Wednesday this week. But as we were talking before, hoping to have the buses running on Wednesdays, you know, for our elementary. So a little bit of savings with the movement from 182 to 177. The budget timelines here, I know we're talking about last year's budget. We're talking about this year's budget and now we get to talk about next year's budget still. If you look at the timeline, it's, it's pretty similar to some of the timelines we've seen in the past. You know, during the finance meeting before Ron and I, you know, expressed our, you know, it says their draft budget due November 30th, that's Thanksgiving weekend. Ron and I have a pretty firm commitment to each other to have that done before Thanksgiving. You all will have draft copies before that, but it's something we don't want to be working on over Thanksgiving. So we'll, we'll get that to everybody. The, the only, you know, big difference I see on there is the, the new flexibility we have with the submission of the, of the Board of Ed budget to the first, first electmen. It used to be January 9th last year. It changed to January 23rd. I think we got, what we did, I, I went to the town council last year to get special permission to move it to the 23rd. But now they, they've amended the charter to include January 23rd. So that, it's nice. That gives us a little time after New Year's because usually, you know, come back after, right after New Year's and we're, you know, adopting the budget to be given to the first electmen, you know, days later. I think also if you look at the, if you look at the, the dates, we were talking about this in the finance committee meeting, December 7th would be the, you know, the budget presentation. Then we have, you know, that Board of Ed meeting will probably do the budget presentation and then go right into budget workshops. Then we have budget workshops for the 9th and 14th. And then the next two regular Board of Education meetings would probably be, you know, you know, kind of reserve budget workshops and we'll, you know, we'll continue with the budgets on, in there as well.
All right.
Quick question.
Are we going to set up, I think last year it was really helpful when we had the Q and A document going.
So I think.
Do it again.
Yeah, because we had things by object code and it was, it was really nice to bring that, I don't know if it was 17 pages, to the Board of Finance meeting. Because when they had an object code number, I know Ron was quoting it because it was already written down. So we could answer that.
That's a good idea. Yeah. Last piece is the, and I know this is, this was brought up during public participation and, you know, opened this up for, for a discussion. You know, Ron was asked to prepare this for the Board of Finance the other day. And basically, it's a list of savings that we've realized last year as a result of COVID. As last year was, was winding down, Ron projected about a one, I'm sorry, about a $900,000 deficit. As you can tell from this sheet, there's a $1.2 million savings, which leaves us the, the roughly $323,000 surplus that we have. If you look at the, if you look at the savings, you can see what some of the big drivers were. Transportation was obviously the largest when, when we renegotiated that contract with them. Utilities, negotiation reserves, there was no custodial overtime, there was no substitutes. You don't really see spring sports per se too much in there, but it's actually intermixed in a number of lines in there with, with no spring athletics. So this is the, this was the surplus that was going to the Board of Finance with the recommendation of putting it into the Board of Education Capital Reserve account pursuant to 10248A. But one of the things at Thursday's meeting, if you weren't on it, that Board of Finance member Steve Kirsch asked the Board of Education to discuss is possibilities for the surplus. You know, we, we made some difficult decisions throughout the budget process last year. We cut some positions. We were able to save a lot of bodies through the furloughs that most staff members agreed to last year. And I say most because, you know, we're still in negotiations with our secretaries and our custodians actually, they took actually a hard zero for the first year. But we did, we did lose some pretty important stuff. We lost a reading teacher. We lost an administrator. We lost our K-5 coordinators. I'd love to bring some of these things back, but I also understand that we also have a staff, you know, that agreed to concessions and it would also be nice to get them, you know, in at the end of the year and get them compensated for that. So, you know, it's tricky, you know, September 21st to have this conversation because there's a lot of unknowns with this year. You know, it's probably most prudent to hold on for now and see where we are as the year progresses. But, you know, I'll open it up to you guys for some discussion. I know some people feel very strongly about this.
Right. And I just need to say that 323 is not ours to spend. So I don't want anybody to think, oh, we have this, this surplus to spend. It is not ours to spend. This is a suggestion by one board member about what our priority list is if the Board of Finance decides to allow us to use it for this year. But as everybody knows, once June 30th happens, the books are closed, that's gone.
It's town money.
All our appropriation that we have to spend this year is the appropriation that we were granted by the town. You cannot cross yours with money. So the options that the board has before them, the Board of Finance, not the Board of Education, is I did send a letter requesting that the money be put into 10248. They did talk about a possibility of setting up, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, a special education reserve with that money. They also discussed the possibility of the COVID account with that. And Steve Kirsch asked for that 323, if we could submit something as a collective board with the superintendent if we wanted things put back. Now that's, they still have to vote on that and they can say no, what that list would be. But it could be all, it, it could be some, it could be none, it could be, hey, we're just, you know.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
At least they're voting no to the teachers and not us.
Right. Well, I think, well.
Go ahead.
You're, you're ahead of.
Uh-uh, no.
Right. Right. You're, yeah. I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's not our money to spend or not spend and that the Board of Finance is the ones who are ultimately making the decision. All we're saying is, hey, this is the priority of list of what we would like as a Board of Education to see to come back. But ultimately, they can say, hey, that's great that that's your list, but we really think that the better use of the money is X.
Yeah, which is fine. Then they'd be voting no for the furloughs and not us.
Well, that's if the Board of Education says that that's what we want.
Understood. Yes.
So I'll, I'll, I'll start, I guess. For the, for furlough days, Ron, how much is it? Do, so there's five unions that agree, I think five out of the seven agree to take something, correct? So how much would it be to, to buy back a day from the unions that agree to furlough days?
All in? All union? About $166,000.
That's one day.
It's one day.
That's one day for all the unions that agreed to furloughs is 166. And do you know what just the teachers would be?
140.
Oh, so, okay. So I think that, and this is, I'm just kicking things off, obviously. I think that, is that, is that exactly half? Math professor can't do math, not quite. But I think that, you know, we have, I think this board does have somewhat of an obligation, if not a moral obligation. I think there's an argument to be made a legal obligation because the MOU that we signed with the teachers did reference that if there is money, that money should be going back. I don't know that, I, I meant to look it up before the board meeting, but I don't know the, the precise language.
I think it's if there's excess in state money legally. Does anybody have?
No, Marie said if there was excess money, I thought it said. You'll have to look it up.
Right. But I think, but I think the term excess money is in the current budget. It's not in a.
Agreed. 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 But I don't think it's state, it's excess money we have.
Those were just different things, like, hey, the, the states say, hey, we're going to give you money to cover expenses, you know.
Agreed.
Then that would be, but yeah, you're talking, we can't confuse it that this is money from last fiscal year, not current year fiscal year.
So the legal piece of it is not a thing.
So the teachers' agreement said, so the extra money had to be from?
Within the current, within this fiscal year. Or like if, so let's say, you know, they gave, the state gave us, I'm just going to use an extra $100,000, right? In, you know, whatever, you know, additional funding. Well, then that would be considered excess that we can, you know, distribute out. But you're not, but again, if we want to use money left over from last year, the Board of Finance really has control over saying yea or nay.
Understood.
And I'm not a lawyer. I'm just saying from what's done is saying.
The teachers were told the town was broke, give back days. So they did. Now, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Doesn't.
Well, I didn't, I didn't finish my proposal.
Go ahead.
I think that we should, I think that half of the money, which is about what one-day buyback would be, would be a show of good faith on our half. And I think the other half is a good idea from the Board of Finance to perhaps make a sped reserve. I don't know if the COVID reserve makes sense because we're getting CRF funds and we're getting CARES Act money, which is somewhere in $900,000 range. I know some of that's earmarked for certain very specific things.
The two combined, you're saying, is we need.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Little, yeah, close to that, yeah.
So I'm, I'm not saying that there can't be expenditures over that in this year based on the next eight months, but that is a, that is a substantial amount of money that was not budgeted for that we now have. That, that would be my recommendation.
So yours would be use the 166 and then the balance to set up a special ed fund?
Yeah, because, I, yes, because I think that.
That's where I'm aiming too, yeah.
Okay. I, I just wanted to have it clear so that I would. I, I just wanted to have it clear so that I would just understand it, so I can write it down, because then we'll need to, you know, sort of vote on it at the end so that we can send the letter, so that's about one fifty-seven for that, for a special ed.
And I think it makes sense, because, you know, we talked last meeting anecdotally about, and at the Board of Finance meeting, Donna, you spoke about, you know, the, the move-ins, we see the enrollments, I mean, we don't have to talk about it anecdotally, we can talk about the data, and, you know, just with a larger number of students, if the proportion of special ed students that we have matches the students that are coming in, it, it, the math just says that special ed is gonna go up and it's gonna be over budget, just based on the numbers of people coming in. So I think that that is a smart idea, but I do think that, as Jerry said, we, we do have, even if we don't have a legal obligation, we do have some obligation to the teachers, to, to all the unions that gave back, I know teachers are the majority, but to all the unions that gave back to, to, to do some of that.
Yeah, we would have to do it to everybody across the board, we couldn't just say we're only giving it to one, but not the other.
Agreed.
If that's a decision that we make, it's gotta be to everybody. So if it's the one furlough day that everybody gets back, it needs to be to everybody.
Okay, I agree.
So can you refresh my memory of what positions were cut, reading teacher, administrator?
You have a reading, so in phase three, you had one reading teacher, one administrator, one library media specialist, those were the phase three cuts that stayed and were cut. Previously to that, you did lose things in phases one and two, like the two K, K five coordinators of science and math. Joe, do you, I mean, I don't remember the whole list.
You're good though, I'm pulling up a lot.
The problem is, these things don't come back.
Two FTE, math, like, there's a, a world language and, I forget what the, the second one was, there was also a math teacher at the middle school over at STEM that was, that was cut, in terms of people, I think that's it for, for teachers.
And what about any other, any other things that were really glaring that we were like, wow, we wish we could not, we could not have cut that?
I mean, you know, I, some of the things that I got concerned about is just a lot of our, our professional development and especially with Teachers College, a lot of the work that we had done, we've done an extensive amount of work there over the years, and that was, that was that. We also increased surcharges.
I think some of these things would come as a higher priority for me than the special ed budget, we can't forget about all the other students, we can't, you know, it's a.
That's a good point, Shannon, what would it cost to bring back the subject area coordinators?
What are they, uh, how much was it?
Shannon, that is a great point.
Was it like two, two thirty in the budget, and what was it?
The.
What would the cut end up being?
Can't, they can't, you know.
Uh, it's, it's tricky, because it's like, inherent says one sixty-seven, could probably be the price of, because one of them retired, so we were gonna backfill that one with a.
Joe, we wanna hold you to it, we were just trying to.
Yeah, no, it's like a hundred and sixty-seven between the two.
But, right, but you would.
Be tricky now, I mean, we have someone in class.
Right, I'm trying to think how you can say that, because I would imagine the one who didn't retire would wanna be restored.
Yeah.
So that, that person sadly would remain the same.
Yeah, that would, yeah, now you're looking at over two hundred thousand.
Right, so you're talking over two hundred, because then you would need to hire somebody or promote somebody within, for the second one, and then need to replace them at an ele, potentially in elementary school, I'm just saying, it could be a middle school too, but potentially somewhere in the K five, if somebody in-house applies for it and gets that position, so you're talking over two hundred, I would say, easy.
All right, thank you.
How much money do we have in the special ed reserve?
We don't have a special ed reserve.
What do you mean?
There is no reserve.
There is no reserve.
What if a high cost, like, what do we do when a high cost?
You have to find the money in the budget. As we know, our budget is based on the num, we've always budgeted, the, based on the number of kids that we know that are in our system as of January, and we actually adjusted the budget and increased special ed and cut elsewhere when we approved the budget in January, because we knew that there was additional students that were from, that weren't in there in December, so we actually increased that, but there is no contingency, there never has been a contingency.
Don't other towns have?
That I couldn't.
Something in place, I imagine?
I don't know, that's the question I couldn't answer.
That's been part of the conversation with the Board of Finance, is they understand that the, you know, they've expressed to us that they understand that, you know, Darlene can talk, I mean, Darlene, you know, she's, she said it here before, you never know, you know, what's gonna happen, someone, someone moves in, someone moves out, you know, and so we're actually reporting out to them every month as well, so they're in the loop of where we are, and if, you know, they need to, hoping that, if we need to reach out to them, we can.
That's a pretty big problem.
I don't think we're unique, I don't, man, just from reading the newspaper and everything that's going on in, in the state, it's not, that, it's, it's a concern with the special ed budget in, in a lot of districts.
Yeah, this is the same issue every district has. I mean, I can't tell you how they, every district specifically does their budget, but we have always only budgeted for who was in our system at that time.
I mean, we could have been in that situation last year, right? And we would have been going to the.
Okay, so.
Social appropriation.
So what will we do, like tomorrow, a high need student moves into the district, that's gonna cost us like one seventy-five?
The same thing we've done every other year, we've had to cut in other places.
So you cut in other places to?
But that's the same, but that's the same policy, that's the same policy we've done for as long I've been on the board.
How are we trending so far this year? Are we, are we forecasting, you know, only a few weeks in, that we're gonna be up over, over plan?
There are, I think she has two potentials in the hopper.
Yeah, I, I would say we're, we're probably trending a little over budget.
A little bit.
We're gonna be, there's no way that sped comes in at budget this year, just based on the numbers of people who get in. And so, I think that, I completely agree with you, that we do have to worry about everyone, of course, but I'm worried that if we try to put some of that back in with this money, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's two million dollars left in the rainy day fund, correct? That, some of that money was used to balance the current budget, the undesignedated balance?
Yeah, so, no, we, we ended up, what did you say, you, you mean the general fund of the town?
The, the unassigned fund of the town.
Yeah, no, there's more than that.
Oh, we didn't use that?
No.
So if we have to cut some of these things later on down the line because of special ed, then that's addressed at then, but, and, like, I'd rather, it affects a larger number of kids, the population, cutting these things that, when we come now, are they gonna come back? I don't think so.
I was working off the assumption that we use some of our unassigned balance to balance the budget that we're in now, and so my concern was if we go over budget on sped and we go to the town and we say we need help because we had two high cost students, they're gonna say, where do you want me to take it from? There, there's no, it's not there.
What, what you're saying is true, that, that is correct, except that the assumption is, is, the assumption was that tax collection was not gonna come in that strong, which right now, it's, they're trending well, so.
So we were gonna use the unassigned balance on the back end?
It's budgeted to use it, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use it.
That's my only concern.
I understand.
We don't know, you know, we don't know what's happening with COVID, if there's some type of, I don't wanna say the R word, there's some type of dip in the economy that begins with an R, and people get, you know, unemployment goes up again, whatever, and they end up using the unassigned fund, if we build back some of these things back in using this excess money, and we have high cost special ed students move into town that we have to educate in a free and appropriate way, on the back end, in March and April and May, when sped is over, and we go to the town and we say we need help, they're gonna say, there's no help to do, I have no, there's no cash to give you, that's my only concern on the back end.
I, I understand, I just feel like it can't be at the expense of the whole, and, and, and I'm not speaking like as a mom, like, as a mom, I have every, every student, I have a kid, I really do, I have sped, I have everything, but I'm just saying you can't do, you can't do it at the expense of, of, you know, at, at the.
I, I just don't wanna bring stuff back to have to cut it in April.
Right.
I, I think that, that we can't treat this as sound money, there's no guarantee that we get any of it back, right?
That's correct.
But we can't treat it as sound money, we have to, we have, and start adding stuff back in, we have to address what's before us. So if before us, we think that there's gonna be additional sped students that we need to plan for, then we should, we should set this up to plan for that. I'm in agreement with other folks on the board that we should give back to the teachers whatever we can, if it's one, if it's one and a half, whatever, whatever the number is of the furlough days, because it was, it was a very noble thing that they did, and I think they need to be, you know, recognized for that, so, that's my opinion, is that, that we have to just, let, let's focus on what's ahead of us.
Anybody have others, anything else? So right now, we have our, as our priority, a hundred and sixty-six thousand for.
Could I just clarify something with that?
Yeah.
So that doesn't, so there are two unions, there's one union that took a zero, and there's one union that is still in negotiations with an open contract, so that one sixty-six is not addressed at all.
Okay.
What does address it?
Well, one.
Every, every other.
Yeah, it would ever be everybody else. One, we're, we're still in the process of negotiations.
So they don't take any?
What?
They don't have furlough days?
They don't have any of it right now, because they're in the middle of negotiations.
The guys that took zero, did they take furlough days?
They took zero.
Okay.
So they took zero for the same reason that the other folks took furlough days, though?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my question, is what, what does that?
Right.
What does that look like if?
It's a good point, George.
We'll work towards on that.
Yep.
Good point.
That's a hard question.
Yeah.
That's a hard question, because it's, they did a contract, see, that's the problem.
On the teachers' furlough days, it equated to about a point four percent increase.
Okay.
Okay, so, if, you know, one of their three furlough days were given back, you're probably looking at a, you know, hip shot, probably about a one percent increase for, for that bargaining.
So how much would that equal with the amount of members in there if you had to just give it a rough shot?
Ah, I wouldn't wanna do that.
I don't, I won't, I won't, I had to try.
I agree, I agree with Ron.
Would you have to reopen that contract?
That would be pretty impressive.
What they did was, their, their contract was up for renewal, they asked to have a.
Zero and hold a year.
So, yes.
If we were gonna give them, would you have to reopen the contract?
Yes, you'd have to renegotiate with that.
Reopen it in order for you to do anything?
Yes.
So do you wanna go there?
Well, again, you wouldn't be going anywhere until the Board of, until the Board of Finance is saying yea and nay.
I'm just saying, when we think about all of our options.
You can just, you can assign, let's say, some sort of number to it, just, you know, as a.
Possible.
As, you know, as a.
I mean, but if you think about it, a hundred and forty out of a hundred and sixty-six K was the teachers, so the other four unions was twenty-six thousand dollars.
Twenty-six thousand, so.
So if you add, just, I don't know.
Ten thousand?
I was gonna say ten maps.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring, if you bought.
So one seventy-five, one seventy-six.
I'd bet if you bought it up, one seventy-five, that should cover.
Yeah.
Right.
I could be wrong, Ron, Ron is the math, was, oh, and Nick, sorry.
I'd come below Ron.
Yeah, I think that would be fair to, to then do that as part of, like I said, the proposal.
And can I just make, I, I wanna address.
So that would leave the one forty-seven for then, at this point.
Yep.
What we have for sped, a, a, again, if that's what everybody's agreement is.
And I just wanna make one more comment to what Shannon was saying, because I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I think that I am so, I am so, I've never been so amped for a budget season, because I'm, I'm telling you, this is gonna.
You are in a party of one.
I'm used to, that's what, that's what I like to be. I think that this upcoming, this upcoming budget season, we have to, I don't want, as a board, as a community, whatever words you wanna use, we have to fight for those things back, because I a hundred percent agree with you, that when something like stuff that was cut in those reductions is cut, it never comes back, and it is, it is in front of everybody right now, because a lot of people in this district, whatever was cut, people felt it. Sometimes when you cut a budget, you, you don't really feel it, oh, we cut paper by ten percent because we gotta fix this, you know, okay, you don't feel that, people felt these cuts, and I think this upcoming budget, as, as bad of a year as it's gonna be, it is gonna be a year to fight for what you want back. But I do agree with George that we do have to plan for what's in front of us, and we know what's coming, and so that the upcoming budget is gonna be a place to kind of, to hopefully address some of those things, right?
And the, yeah. Right, and I think this is also a year that's an anomaly, because we've seen so many people moving in, you know, in past years, you kind of had, I, I don't wanna say, you, you could kind of make assumptions, most people are gonna move in in August, and then you're gonna have your October one, and then the next group of people are gonna move in and, you know, probably over the Christmas holiday, because they don't wanna disrupt kids. I don't know if that's gonna hold true this year, I think you're gonna have people popping in all year long, I, I mean, because of the situation. So I think you don't know what the unknown is that are coming, because you have no idea, it's not like they say, oh, we're gonna all be moving here, you, you don't know, I mean, I'm concerned from that standpoint with this year is that we just, we don't know what's gonna come down the pike, because it, we're in such a situation, we have no idea what's gonna happen.
That's why we can't count on those enrollment studies, is, there's no way that.
That goes out the window. That goes out the window, quite honestly, in this type of environment, nobody would have projected or predicted in any enrollment study something like this happening.
Monroe's favorite word, the hundred-year storm, unfortunately, and Monroe, that's every week.
All right, so is everybody good with that, that that would be what we would, and Joe, you're good with that?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Did you come up with an adjusted number?
We did.
What, what was it, one seventy-five?
One seventy-five.
Well, you have to do the.
One seventy-six, and then one forty-seven for special ed, and again, I'm just doing, you know, that just totals to three twenty-three, I'm just doing like, I'm not doing exact, you know what I'm saying?
I think one eighty-four, one eighty-five is more.
You think so?
Yeah.
What for the, for the, the what?
For the other union.
So what do you think it should be, one eighty?
Eighty-five.
One eighty-four? Okay.
God, Ron, you're good.
All right, I'll go with whatever you say, Ron, your other.
So what coordinators was it, Joe?
The K five.
The, uh, K five math and science coordinators.
I think, I think I, I'm in the party of one, that I would rather see like the reading teacher, the, the K to five coordinators, I'd rather see, I, I, I don't mean instead of the furlough day, I don't mean that, I mean, instead of the reserve fund, I, I like the, I like the, the furlough day, I vote for that, but, but instead of a reserve fund, I think you're affecting more of the district and more long-term with the, with like the coordinators and reading teachers, things like that, but I, I think I'm outvoted.
So is everybody good with that, one eighty-four for the furlough day, and then the one thirty-nine for the special ed? Is everybody, except for Shannon, who I know is not for the second part, everybody else is good with that, with putting that into the Board of Finance as our priorities for the three twenty-three?
Pending Ron's confirmation of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it may adjust a little once Ron confirms. Are you good with that number, or do you wanna work it up?
Yeah, I mean, the, the other thing is, is you wanna, is this something you wanted to actually have a consensus on tonight, or I think there's another board meeting before the next Board of Finance?
Right, I mean, we could, you know. Right, I mean, we could, you know.
Well, thanks.
Vote on it tonight.
Yeah, I, I mean, either way, we could, you can firm up the number, and then we can finalize it next time. Because again, they meet once a month, so we do have another meeting before they would meet.
Just a question on the special ed before we vote or not vote. So we're talking about putting a rainy day fund for special ed, right, as part of this?
Well, the, well, the, so, so they ask, so two things. Some of the ideas that they were floating around was putting a special ed fund together because of the unpredictability of special ed. They fully acknowledge that that is unpredictable. We can't predict, you know, when we do a budget in January, that there's six new people who come with IEPs, and, you know, they're high cost. There's no way to project that. So they fully understand that, that that's something that, you know, that, that is ever-changing, and that affects the, um, Board of Education budget, and they kind of feel, and part of what they said was, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, others who were on the call, that they don't want the board to be penalized for those unknowns, like, like, um, special education students. But what Steve Kirsch said is, hey, that three, so they may do that with the money, they may use it for COVID, a COVID fund. But Steve Kirsch said, hey, if you could use the money for other things that got taken out, or you feel that are priorities that are not in this year's budget, what would those be? Again, that's not a guarantee that they're gonna say, yeah, that, we're in agreement with that, they're just asking that question.
I understand that. I just, my point is that we say we set aside this money for special ed. We get the money, I should say, right? We set it aside.
Well, no, they set it aside, on the town side.
And then we would only touch it, and, and, I, I mean, I guess I look at it as inevitability, that we're gonna have to touch that, because as they pointed out, the numbers trend that way. So unless we're gonna, moving forward, be budgeting for this surplus, I, I just don't see the, the, the point in it, because it's gonna be constantly-
Well, I think-
I see our, I, I mean, on a personal level, I see the growth in families coming here. And based on the numbers, I think it's inevitable that we're going to see an increase. And if we're not going to actively budget for, not, maybe not a surplus, but at least increasing numbers, I just don't see the point, you know, being, the vote with Shannon, that we, we shouldn't be setting this money aside. Unless we're gonna, you know, actively, like I said, budget for this.
Right, I can't speak for them, but I think what they're saying, and Ron, you would know better than I, they're saying that they would wanna establish a ongoing fund. Um, a, what do they, what do they call that, a fund designation, right?
Yeah, whether, whether it be, uh, uh-
Non-lapsing.
Reserved within the general fund for that specific purpose, or a, uh, I don't know, it wouldn't be a special revenue fund.
Right.
I mean, they were, they were looking at basically setting up a reserve for special ed.
Ongoing.
That, that wouldn't lapse.
Right.
It would be, you know.
So they may say-
You may not need it this year, but you might need it next year.
Right.
Right.
Well, so they would say, we're gonna set aside a half a million dollars a year, and I'm just making up numbers, 'cause I don't know what they're voting on. But I think what they're saying is, they wanna establish a reserve that's, let's say, I'm just gonna throw out a half a million dollars a year that's special ed related. So if you have people move into the district, that we did not anticipate that that money would be there to cover that. But that would be an ongoing thing, not just a one-year thing.
I think that we do, we do need to, I think the point of, of setting this up now, though, is because we may have an increase, we may be over our plan this year, right?
Yes.
And then we'll have to cut, and make cuts, so rather than make cuts, we have the contingency to cover what we don't.
So-
So it's gonna affect it one way or another.
Right.
But the other point that Jeff's bringing up is, I do think we need to change our budgeting methodology in terms of, of special ed.
Definitely.
We talked about this last year, too, when we were in, we were already in the budget workouts.
Yes.
So maybe we can do the diligence ahead of those workouts this year. We should look at like a five-year trend of what our percentage increase has been, uh, in, in special ed. And it, you know, try to do that trend analysis to forecast for next year, as opposed to just using those, you know, as of this date, this is what we have. 'Cause we'll always be trying to play catch-up and shuffling money around if we, we don't start doing some trending and forecasting.
There's such a strong voice, too, which is, which is a good thing, right? Like, we're one of five states where the burden proof is on, is on the school district. We have, we have unfunded mandates coming from the state level, and it's, um, you know, highly, highly, you know, prioritized for us and stuff, but at, at what point does the rest of the population get their, get, have their rights? You know what I mean, not their rights, but like, focus as well, too.
Well, I think we also need to look at, you know-
You get pushed back sometimes a little bit, too.
I, I agree.
Look at the whole population.
So if we look at like the two, the two coordinators, right, that, those positions, what metrics or data can we put around those to justify bringing them back? You know, as part of the budget workout? And then let's put that forward, let's make the case. So I would have no problem if we got into the budget workout, and I saw those two positions back on the table.
And then also the, the rainy day fund, um, where they were expecting the worst-case scenario with taxes and stuff, and that didn't play out. So this is like, you know, we're putting it in for the special ed of, if, and, and it's not even our decision, but if it goes in there and it doesn't get used, you know, or, or we had that backup if we needed it, versus just cutting things for a high percent of our student population that we'll probably never see again, even if, even if-
Some of them have come back. We've, we've cut and then we've brought back in years past. So there is, there is some history there, bringing some back. But my point is, we have a budget cycle ahead of us now. That's the time to reintroduce this stuff. And you do it by making the case, you know, let's, let's look at, you know, how we were performing before, you know, we made the cuts and, and after. If you can have that kind of data available.
I, I, I agree with George. I think we gotta look at the way we've been budgeting for special education, because I really don't like the idea of, you know, a high-cost, uh, student moves in. Okay, we'll cut from here and move this around, but I, I don't like-
I understand that, I do understand that.
Right, we need to determine, though, we need to look at it, and Ron, you're gonna really need to be the point person to look at it, because do you take a five-year average, including this year? Because this year could be an anomaly? Or do you take a five-year average excluding this year, because we assume things will go back to, I don't wanna say normal, but back to a more stable, um, uh, uh, environment than, than we've had this past year?
Yeah, I think you have to look at the outliers.
Yeah, I, you know, I, that, that's a good, uh-
Statistical dilemma.
There has to be best practices in other districts about this, I mean.
I don't know, it's just so new, and so, um, you know, and, and, and also, it's more Fairfield County, and we're at the northern tip of it, that's really being affected by, I mean, although I don't, I don't do stuff, maybe people from Boston are moving into the northern part of the state, so I could totally be wrong. But like, it's Fairfield County, so it's, and it's so brand-new, you know?
I think, I think unfortunately, we're at a disadvantage in our geographic location with regards to what you're saying. And I think we're also at a disadvantage, uh, logistically, in the way our local government is set up. Because if you look at towns around us, the Board of Finance is not the last stop for the Board of Ed budget. It goes to the legislative body, and then sometimes it stops there, and then sometimes it goes to the referendum. We have three checkpoints. That's not the norm in this area. We go first selectmen, Board of Finance, referendum. We're just the beginning. And there's so many places where even if we come out with a nine-o budget, saying we need this, 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 and this, that it can be adjusted down. And then we get to the referendum, and then, you know, I think, and we can do this more in the budget workshop, but I think there needs to be like a larger conversation about, you know, messaging out the budget, and, and telling the people, it's so hard to vote yourself a tax increase, right? I mean, just, just thinking about that logically doesn't make sense. So no is the status quo. And getting, convincing people to vote yes is the problem. But we're also at a logistical disadvantage in the way we're set up that we have to overcome. And I think this year is the year to do that, because people are paying attention. Like I said, these cuts hit people, and this is the year to get them back. I'm ready to knock on doors for the budget. I don't know about you guys, but I am so ready to go.
Joe, you're fired up.
I'm really fired up.
During Joe's Assistant Superintendentcy, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, our sped apartment, years past, had put in for extra funding. And I don't, I don't know exactly what years it happened, but I remember-
It may be, but I think those got, I think it was like fifty thousand, and then it got, those got taken out.
But she had a metric as to how she came up with that number. That's what I need to figure out, is that metric.
Yeah.
I don't care what the number was, I wanna know the metric she used.
I don't know if there was a metric.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought there was, I thought she-
I could be wrong, but I don't think, Darlene, do you know?
Okay. That's fine.
But I don't think any of that, that ever moved forward.
No, you're right, but I was just impressed with the metric that was being used, so I was trying to figure out how that happened.
I mean, I think that we should have a metric, but I think it needs to be based on some sort of trend data.
Oh, I think the trend would definitely, now, what's gonna happen to that trend though, you know, this year?
Right, and that's really the question.
That's where your contingency would, uh, is required.
And that's what you kind of have to look at. Do you include this year? Do you exclude this year and just go through, you know?
We just pull up both outliers, Ron and Nick.
But my question about a possible reserve fund, since we're here now, is, would that be on the board's side or on the town's side?
Town's side, okay. We don't have anything, we wouldn't have, all we're allowed is our appropriation and the strength.
Good, because then, 'cause then if that was, if it came over here, then I do agree with Shannon, because then if you're budgeting a surplus, a sped surplus in your, not a surplus, a reserve, a sped reserve in your budget, then you are knocking other things out. But if it's held on the town's side, it won't affect the budget we send.
Right.
Right, and that's another thing we really need to also talk to the town on. If they're gonna establish this reserve on the town's side, then I'm gonna say they're not gonna want us to do a contingency, 'cause really that's the contingency.
Totally, totally.
Right, so that we also have to get very, depending on what, and again, they're gonna do this next month, so we have no idea what they're doing next month. But if their decision next month is they are gonna, um, set up this, this reserve that's gonna go ongoing, then they're gonna say, you don't need to build it in your budget, you just build the numbers Darlene has, as of January, and we're gonna be the contingency on, on, on the town's side.
Gotcha.
For that. So that we also have to clear up, too.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too, where I was going with what Ron was saying, that, that, you know, it wasn't as dire as they thought on the town's side with taxes and stuff like that, so there-
The way things are trending right now.
Ron said everything's fine, so.
But also, the, the Board of Finance has a policy on the undesignated fund being a percentage of the budget, correct? Or being a percentage of something.
Yeah, it is a, it's, they, they wanna keep it as a, as a percentage of budget expenditure.
Right, so if we did have to use some of that money, and, and if we do bring the rainy day fund down to two million, which was budgeted for, but night, but might not be actualized, that brings us way below the Board of Finance's suggested guidance on having the rainy day fund at a certain percentage of the operating budget. And then I, I'm just concerned, and this is the long-term planner in me, looking at April, seeing our sped budget, going to the town, and tax revenues not being high, and then saying, we don't have money to give you.
Right, no, I get, I totally get it, I totally get, the flip side of the coin is me trying to think about like more balanced for all of the students, for a hundred percent of the population, you know, the special ed and the non-special ed, just more balanced for everybody, and trying to, but I understand.
And we fight for that in the budget.
Trying to fight for it today.
So there's a lot of things going on, because there's a lot of assumptions that we just don't know at this point. I mean, I think we're gonna, you know, I think that some of those will happen as we move along with next month, knowing what the Board of Finance decides to do. Because if they don't set up a special ed reserve for us, then clearly we're gonna need some trend data to build it. If they do and say, we're gonna take care of this as a contingency, we don't. So a lot of things are gonna have to, I guess, under, be understood and, you know, come to light within the next month or so.
Right.
So that we know how we're gonna approach.
So we had a, we had a good conversation, maybe we, we finalize it at our next meeting, right?
Well, yeah, so, we kind of, I think, have gotten to the point where, listen, we're looking at the one furlough day to give, you know, to want, that's priority one, to be able to, um, do that for all the unions. Number two is taking that balance, um, to the, um, as special ed reserve. But Ron's gonna give us final numbers, and then we'll finalize that next meeting, which will be in two weeks, and then we can send that information as the Board of Finance requested to us, that these are our priorities for the three twenty-three.
And I would hope that the Board of Finance would recognize that the Board of Education is making a recommendation about how to spend funds for the Board of Education. I, obviously, I don't know what they're gonna do, but I, I will, I, I'm interested to see what happens, because we're making a recommendation that we think, or at least a majority of us think, is appropriate for our district, and, you know. I hope, hope people are watching.
So we're going to make our recommendation and then, uh, and advocate for that. Unfortunately, then it is out of our hands as the final decision. But we, this is the priorities we feel as the priorities of the Board of Ed, so.
Okay.
Perfect. Anybody else before we move on? All right, we have nothing under old business, and we have five policies for first review. I know that Jerry has already, um, brought to light two of the policies and some wording for Jack, so two of the policies may need to have some sort of wording adjustments or clarity, correct?
Yeah, George, I'm sorry I didn't call you. I just read these like a few hours ago and realized I wasn't happy with the wording.
We made a mistake?
Yes. Yes, I did make a mistake, yes.
All right, so, uh, when I'm, I'm gonna read through these and just give a synopsis of each, and then Jerry, just stop when, when we wanna make a change, and Jack, I think, has notes or we can, okay? Okay, so Policy three, three, two, six, paying for goods and services. This policy reflects the process for approval of expending budget funds. The Board of Ed authorizes a superintendent or designate to approve payment for the current obligations of the school district. A report of these expenditures shall be made at the regular meetings of the Board of Ed. Uh, and the Board of Ed will review all purchases in the warrant on a month-to-month basis. Okay?
Pardon?
Policy thirty-one hundred, budget and budgeting system. The BOE shall prepare an annual operating budget for the school district, uh, Town of Monroe Charter, and Board of Finance requirements governing, governing preparation timelines and available appeal procedures of reductions to the educational budget. So we're responsible for meeting each of those. The Board of Ed shall review school programs in relation to the student and community needs, and develop along with superintendent budget priorities for the fiscal year. The superintendent will present the budget to the Board of Ed for its consideration.
So George, the only change I'd like to make, Jack, do you remember what the change was? I didn't write it down.
Yes, uh, the, that, uh, policy is broken into three parts. The very first part, the statement of the Board of Education preparing its annual operating budget. We're gonna break that into two sentences, so it verifies that we're following a sequence of timeline, and then that the Board follows, uh, appropriate practices in terms of the prepar, the, that govern the preparation of timelines and available appeal procedures, um, as it impacts the budget. So it's not to confuse, do, does any one of those entities, the Board of Finance, Town Charter, et cetera, have control over those other procedures, or simply they will follow those procedures?
Okay. Thanks, okay. Uh, four, one, one, eight, dot, two, three, seven, face masks and covering, coverings, this is new?
Yes.
Okay. This policy pertains to students, faculty, staff, and visitors to our schools, contains the- the guiding principles and definitions regarding face masks and coverings to safeguard the health of every one of our schools. The policy addresses the requirements for those to use, for the use of face masks in the schools, on buses and on school grounds. It also addresses the few exemptions regarding the need to wear a face mask. These exemptions are very specific to serious medical conditions specified by the State Department of Education and/or developmental disabilities that may not tolerate or be able to comply well with mask-wearing in schools, also specified by the State Department of Education. So this is all guidance by the State Department of Education in terms of mask-wearing and exceptions to that. Anything there, Jerry?
Nope, no. Perfect.
3130, facilities maintenance. Policy ensures that the superintendent and the director of finance will create a capital improvement plan as part of the maintenance budget. The maintenance budget will be part of the superintendent's annual budget and address the needs of the schools appropriately.
George, the only thing I forgot was to add us. So I added, right, Jack, didn't we add the Monroe Board of Ed? We should be part of that. Sorry about that, George.
Okay. Good.
For 3130, Jerry?
Yeah, we're, because we vote on the capital plan as part of the budget vote, so we just, that was missed in that.
Right, I just left this out, I feel bad.
Director of Finance and Board of Ed. Right. Okay.
George, hang on a second, just going back to face mask covering, I know, not to nitpick this, but don't we have a policy that we cannot wear, it's not, it can't be just any face covering? I mean, it can't be, and we've said no to neck gaiters and stuff like that. I mean, are you, do you need to distinguish that in here or no?
I don't know that we did or that it does, or it doesn't, it does do that, doesn't it?
It does.
It does, it does distinguish against neck.
It's a pin, it's a weight down, I'll find it for you.
Yeah, I thought it did too.
Just while we talked about it. Thank you, Ray, Jack. I'll see you then.
Yeah, I know, I know neither.
I understand.
I thought we had a policy that said that, that that was no gaiters, no.
I don't think we have a policy. I think this is why we put this policy together, but we can.
I think it was just an email from Joe.
Yeah, I think we had said.
All right, so then not should be.
The, the DPH has said that, has not come out and said not to use gaiters. But the one thing that they have said, and maybe we should add it to this, is the mask with the exhalation valves.
Right, that, that's a no.
Or, or not recommended.
But doesn't the, doesn't the superintendent get to interpret poli, like the policies that we pass? Like the definitions of a face-covering mask is a cloth paper or disposable face covering covers the nose and mouth? Like wouldn't superintendent be able to, in his, with his authority, say this fits the definition, this doesn't?
I don't know, it's kinda gray. It's a little gray.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm not supposed to either way, I'm just.
Yeah.
I think sometimes it's better to be clear than, than to leave it for interpretation. So if those ones that have the, whatever they call those, the.
The gaiter, is that what it is?
No, 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 the one that has the valve.
Oh, the valve.
Actually, maybe that makes it easier for Joe because then he could say, hey, it's the Board.
Right, it's the policy and it's the Board, it's right, stated right in the Board policy. Now, I know some places do not permit gaiters. Is, is that something that we?
I had originally, I think I had said that.
I didn't remember you saying.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then DPH came out and said, you know, not necessarily saying that they can't wear them. I know that's probably a bigger issue at the middle school and high school with the neck gaiters.
Joe, it was part of the district instructional plan for fall?
Yeah.
And at that time, there was guidance saying that they were not as well protected for students.
Yeah.
But I think.
Since then, the DPH has come out and said it's.
So it's changed. So we might have kids walking the hallways of mass that have the gaiter on, is what he's saying to me.
I think the one with the valve is more.
But the one with the valve, they said was not okay.
Right, I think that has to be added.
Sure. It's like everything else starts over, it changes.
Everything changes.
Nice, nice catch there, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought you just pitched.
We'll let that one sit for a little bit.
We may need to put Jerry in some isolation.
Yeah, behind like a plexiglass way in the corner.
Someplace. So he's protected and far away.
He can build it all in a plexiglass cubicle.
Last one, 3160, transfer funds. This policy provides for the superintendent and director of finance to transfer any unexpended or uncontracted-for portion of any appropriation fee for which they are responsible to any other appropriated line item in the budget. The BOE will review the financial statement of the district on a monthly basis.
But now, is this, what is this, does, what is this for end of year? Because we actually have to approve the transfers at the end of the year.
I mean, that's kinda what, what we're talking about there.
Right, but it doesn't say we're voting on it.
It says the Board of Ed.
Says here, approval of a monthly financial report will constitute approval of the transfers made during the month.
But we don't really do that monthly, do we?
Well, we vote on a consent agenda as a part of.
No, 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 but I'm saying we don't typically do transfers monthly, right? Don't we wait till the end of the year?
Yeah, I will have some for you next month.
Okay. But typically, we wait until year end to do the transfers. So I guess that brings up a point, are we changing the whole procedure of the way we do it now?
Well, isn't, isn't this the current policy? It's just the blue is added and the red is striked?
Correct, yes.
So maybe, maybe this is a larger conversation of.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
If we're not following the policy slash do we wanna change it?
Right, right, because like the Board of Finance does the same thing. They vote on the transfers to balance that and close out that budget, that fiscal year, just like last, two weeks ago, we voted on the transfers and closed out the fiscal year.
But this also gives us flexibility, like Ron said, he's gonna have some for us next month to.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying, is, is this okay that we're gonna possibly change our, and again, we're not in obviously compliance with our policy, is that okay that we're gonna do that?
I don't know that we're changing though, right? Because we still review the financial statement on a monthly basis.
Oh, right, 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 but usually we don't do the transfers on a monthly basis. We only do the transfers at year end. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so if we are gonna do transfers mid-year, because it sounds like we, we might do that, then this covers us for those instances where we are doing transfers on a monthly basis. That's the way I would see it. Even though the norm is that we wait until the end of the year to do it.
Right, but I'm just concerned about like, we're making our final ones, like we made our final one in September, so in Jan, in, in June, we wouldn't, we're not making our final ones.
Can we just add a, maybe perhaps a line at the end that says something like, the Board of Education reserves the right to make year-end transfers as it sees fit? And then you can do them monthly, you can do them year-end, but the policy covers both and you're not restricting yourself if you only do annual.
Not a bad idea.
Right.
Board of Ed reserves the right.
I mean, I guess the question is on a monthly basis, so, you know, how would you want the transfers presented next month? I can just have them made already and, and speak to them in the financial reports or not have them made.
No, no, it should, it should be a vote because the financial reports.
Right, you have to approve them.
Are not on the consent calendar.
Right.
Right.
So it should be a.
It has to be a vote, it has to say, you know, a vote anticipated for monthly transfers. It can't just be as part of the fund, you know, the fund activity. Because there is, there, we're not approving the fund activity.
Okay, so, because right now, the, what the, what it's saying is approval of the monthly financial report will constitute approval of the transfer.
Right, but we're not really approving the monthly financial report.
Yeah, I think that second paragraph needs to be totally.
Right.
Figure it out.
Right.
No, I think it needs to be rewritten to show that the board can on a monthly or on an annual basis, as the case may be, approve transfers that are needed.
Right.
All right, you gotta, you gotta talk to a lawyer, but.
Right, because we're not approving anything as, as it is currently. Like if it was in the consent agenda, we would be approving it, but we're not really, it's not in the consent agenda, it is just a.
Gotcha.
We're just discussing the, the, the fund activity.
I think we're doing it the way we wanna do it and we have to make the policy match what we're already doing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So we may need to adjust that.
So do we wanna include the, another line in there about it could be monthly or it could be annual?
However, we wanna talk about it because, but we'll need to adjust our agenda moving forward to whatever we decide because right now we don't vote on, we don't vote on the fina, accepting the financials, so we would have to be able to vote on accepting the financials. But that's more of a agenda item than it would be a policy item.
Yeah, I, I, I think the way we do it now is, is great. I think we have our activity report under the report of the superintendent, he passes it to Ron, and I think transfers could be on consent, but that we should see the ins and the outs of each thing.
I think you'd have to do it under new business because consent, it comes so at the beginning of the agenda, you're not gonna be discussing it there.
Yeah, yeah, that's mine too.
So you're gonna probably have to do it as a new business, you know, same wording as last month, like approval of the, you know, transfers.
Right. Yeah, I think to, to, George, I think that second paragraph just needs to say, that needs to come out and just say something like, the board may approve transfers.
As needed.
Yeah, forget about monthly or annual.
Right.
Whenever they need to.
I mean, it's probably cleaner as, you know, to have the transfer approved before it's made. Now, right, you know, the way this reads is you make the transfer, it's in the financials and then you're approving the financials. I mean, what if you don't wanna approve the transfer, correct?
I agree.
Agreed.
Yep.
All right, so we'll just need some, some, some new language or added language there.
Jack, you can take that.
All right.
And that is it.
Perfect, thank you so much. So those are up for first review. Obviously, we've made some adjustments to the 3100 and the 3130. And then this one, because this may be the 3160, a, a, a bit more of a change, I think this one will need to have as a first review next time. I think the other ones we all understand and we can just make those changes and vote anticipated, but that 3160, I think next time should be a first review again just so that we can.
Because we changed it.
See that and make sure everybody's comfortable with that policy going forward.
Cool.
All right, anybody have anything else on that? If not, I'm gonna move on to the teacher evaluation plan, vote anticipated. Do I have a motion to approve the teacher evaluation plan as presented? Thank you, Shannon, second, Nick. Any discussion on this?
Just thank you for your hard work on that.
Yeah, and it makes sense, I mean, in this time to have to make some adjustments to how this is gonna be done. Um, any other further discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Do I have, does anybody have anything else before we adjourn?
Adjourn.
Thank you, second. Thank you, Christine, all in favor? Thank you so much.